Good evening, everybody. And I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for May 12th, 2020. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you for everyone who came out and for everyone who is, thank you, everyone who is watching at home, staying in their house. I've got a couple of comments I want to make before we move into other comments. First thing I want to do is say that in case you haven't seen the news today, Bristol was awarded, was awarded a $300,000 grant from the EPA for brownfield studies. This will actually help us with, there's no local match, so there's no local money that will go into this. This will actually help us see what we can do as far as working with the Geneva side on Fairview Road and with the side on Bob Morrison Boulevard. And the grant proposal, I think, had a lot of work from Ellen and from Sally, so I want to say thank you to them. We were one of, I think, four localities in the area that received the grant, and this is the first time that we ever received it. So, thank you to EPA and thank you to Sally and Ellen for your work on it. The other thing I was going to say, so, we're coming to the end of a school year, and I'm sure everyone's seen on social media the stuff that's been going on with Ms. Probst from Virginia High School and The Rock giving her a going-away party, you know, via the internet. And one thing I wanted to mention, we have a lot of teachers who will retire at the end of every school year. One that I wanted to highlight, though, just for a brief second, is Ben Tally. So, he has been teaching with our city school system for 29 years, and in that time, he has touched the lives of countless students at Van Pelt. I was there at Van Pelt, I wasn't in his class, but he is a wonderful teacher and he's done a lot of good in our community, not just for students, but going to the jails and teaching the inmates and what he does for our homeless population. He's in the National Teachers Hall of Fame as of, I believe, 2015. So, I just wanted to take a moment and applaud him for his work and congratulate him on his retirement, and it's well-deserved. And I don't think he'll slow down, I think he'll still be teaching, maybe just in different ways. So, I just want to give him a shout-out for that. That's all I've got for my comments. Do we have any other council comments? City manager's comments?
Yeah, council, I just want to remind, if you look at Item D of the agenda, adding street closures to the consent agenda, this was a late-minute addition that I reached out to Burger Bar and to Quaker Steak yesterday to see if they'd be interested in us closing down Piedmont from Good Street to State Street in order to allow additional outdoor dining. Not only did we reach out to those restaurants, we reached out to other downtown restaurants as well to see if they needed additional outdoor dining space so that they could take advantage of the reopening weekend, since you can't have dining indoors, but you can dine outdoors. So, I respectfully request that you all add that street closure to the agenda and approve that as well.
All right, thank you. So, Item D is adoption of the agenda, so we would need a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the addition of the street closure request referenced.
Well, I have a question about the street closure. What's your projected timeline on having that street closed?
Close from 4:00 P.M. on Friday and reopen Saturday night about midnight.
So, 4:00?
Midnight. From 4:00 Saturday to, it'll stay closed from 4:00 P.M. Friday, all Friday night, and all day Saturday.
I mean, do you want to add this to the consent agenda or just add it to the agenda and we can talk about it when it comes up?
Your all's decision.
I mean, if you've got questions, we could just do it that way.
Okay.
Just, I mean, add it as, I guess, Item 4 1/2 or whatever.
Okay, so you don't want to have a motion, does someone want to make a motion to add this as a regular agenda?
Yeah, I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented and add Piedmont Avenue street closure, I guess.
Item 3, if you don't care. Make it the new Item 3.
Make that Item 3 and 3 and 4, down to 4 and 5.
Okay, so we have a motion from the Vice Mayor to adopt the agenda with the change that we discussed, Piedmont Avenue street closure as Item 3, and then move everything down one slot. So, I have a motion, and I need a second.
Second.
A second from Mr. Farnham, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Regular agenda, Item 1, proclamation.
Public comment, you skipped numbers.
Oh, excuse me, I did, I marked it out already. Ms. Marnie?
I think I'll page on this.
Are you sure?
No.
Okay. You're welcome. All right, so, Item 1 is proclamation for Kids to Park Day, staff report.
Counsel, this is the proclamation for Kids to Parks Day. This proclamation would recognize the National Park Trust, which holds annually on the 3rd Saturday of May as Parks to Kids Day.
All right, thank you very much. Looks like no one signed up for public comment on it, so, reading of the resolution by caption only.
Proclamation of Kids to Parks Day, May 2020.
Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on it.
I move, will you approve that?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Farnham and second from Mr. Hartley. Is there any discussion?
Well, are they going to be breaking the law?
Go on the trails. They'll stay apart. All right, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Item 2, resolution approving special exception number 02-2020 for 873 Old Airport Road to allow automotive sales business and the relocation of the existing utility building sales to adjoining lot, staff report.
Mayor and council members, you all had this on your agenda for public hearing at the last meeting. I have the same slides, I don't probably need to go through the staff report again, but they're queued up here if you have questions. But just a reminder, this is property that's owned B1 and does not by right allow auto sales. Mr. Jeff Curtis is the applicant, he has plans to start a new car sales business, Curtis Automotive, at this location where he already has a business of utility building sales. Since the original business started there for the utility building sales, he has acquired adjoining property, and so now he's able to have more space to move those buildings over and continue that business, but also continue, I mean, start the new business. So, as I said, I don't know that I need, let me just run through pictures and the site plan, just to refresh your memory, is at acre and a half and three entrances onto Old Airport Road. And he plans a capacity of about, up to 35 cars with enough room for customer parking. Small pictures. And there is residential adjoining R1, and that's why the planning commission did recommend approval with some conditions, though, and here's just a summary of staff analysis. I think that only, there were some questions about car washing being done off-site, and the reason for that is we can't allow the runoff to go into the storm drainage, and he understands that. So, he will do only limited, you know, car washing there that won't be an everyday-type thing. And no lighting that would impact the residences nearby. This is an area that is regional commercial on our land use plan, also, it is on our proposed zoning maps to be rezoned to B3, which would allow this type use as by right, so. So, the recommendation is to approve the request with these listed conditions, and you have a resolution with that in your packet.
All right, thank you very much. If we have any questions, we'll get that in the discussion, so.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so, public comment, one person has signed up, and that's Ms. Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie, I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia, I am a property owner, I pay my taxes. I am also a former member of the planning commission, so I am very knowledgeable about how these things work and procedures that are used and not used and swept under the rug and so forth in order to get certain results. I have a concern with this. Now, I do remember that several years ago, there was a request to use the adjoining property to the utility buildings, and this was turned down by the council. But there was a request for this, it has come up, I don't know whether it's the same gentleman or not, but I do know that it has been turned down at least once, maybe twice. Now, my concern, well, I have a lot of concerns, but my overriding concern at this moment on this particular item is I think it is very bad policy to either encourage or reward anybody who is asking for a special exception when they have not met the conditions of their zoning approval that had already taken place. And it's my understanding that this gentleman, who I do not know, it is my understanding that he did not meet the requirements of the rezoning he got the first time. And then before he even could apply and be told yes or no, on the exception, he had already put, what, two or three utility buildings on the property, he had not planted the shrubbery he was supposed to plant, he had not done some things he was supposed to be required to do. When I was on the planning commission, we required them to meet what was supposed to be done, and if they didn't, you don't get the exception. I don't think we should reward or encourage any citizen to not do what they're supposed to do. Now, in the first place, I think that this city, and the planning commission, the council, anybody you want to include in that, I think that the city has gotten far too lax and playing fast and loose with some of these zoning exceptions, and I don't think any thought has been given in a number of cases to what comes next. What are you willing to give up in order to get a car lot? My lord, we got car lots on every street corner. What are you willing to give up possibly in the future in order to get that car lot we don't need? From a man who didn't even have the courtesy or the good sense or the decency to follow the rules of the whole thing? I'm concerned about this because we are in a pattern. This city is in a pattern of special exceptions, and in my opinion, most of them should not even exist. The zoning used to be very good, it was worked on a long time, it was very good, the sign ordinances were very good, and they've all been shot to the moon somewhere. I think you all ought to be careful. We're encouraging the wrong kind of people, we're spending too much money on people who don't behave now. That's one thing that's got us in trouble. We are having to spend too much money on people who don't behave and people who make bad decisions, and I consider this not to the extreme of someone in jail, but he didn't do what he was supposed to do.
Thank you very much. So, reading of the resolution by caption only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia granting a special exception, parentheses, SE number 02 hyphen 2020, close parenthesis, for 837 Old Airport Road for automotive sales and relocation of existing utility building sales.
Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move to approve special exemption.
Second.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Wingard and second for Mr. Farnham. Council discussion. And if we have any questions for Ms. Morgan, she's still here for it.
My question was, just to clarify, that the way we're redoing our zoning ordinance and the zoning map, my understanding is that this was going to be recommended for a change anyway in the future, so in a way, this special exemption is happening and it's just sort of speeding up his ability to do it. If we didn't do it, he'd be able to do it in the future anyway, once that zoning map changes, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
He's got all his paperwork, he wants to start his business, and I had told him he might want to wait to see if we had it rezoned, and then that lasted longer, so that's why he applied for this special exemption. And again, it's not an exemption, it's an exception, exceptions are normal part of zoning ordinances everywhere.
I have one question for you while you're still up here. So, the recommendation with the conditions, was that recommended by you as just a standard recommendation, or did that actually, was that members of the planning commission that came up with that, or?
The, all of them, or?
Yeah, yeah, where did they, where did those ideas come from?
Yes, they were staff recommended. The only, the fifth one, the planning commission made a slight change to it, whereas in 2016, the special exception permit said that no buildings more than one story could be on the property, and they decided they did not think that was needed, and so that was struck from this particular recommendation, that he can have two-story buildings there if he doesn't have any, I think, now, but he might future.
Only two-story storage buildings, but not the actual?
Right, for sale, his inventory for sale, sorry.
Not building brick and mortar, two-story?
Right, no, just his portable buildings.
So, to follow up on Mr. Farnham's point, if we were to wait and this becomes rezoned B3 whenever, a few months down the road, he could do all this by right without any of these conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so this would, by doing this now, it allows him to do it quicker, but it also restricts what he would be able to do later on?
Yes.
Okay.
You have any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Morgan. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, our new item 3 is Piedmont Avenue street closure request for restaurant reopenings. Do you want to do a staff report on this?
I can, counsel. Counsel, I'm requesting that we close a portion of Piedmont Street from Good Street and Winston's Alley down to State Street, beginning on Friday, May 15th at 4:00 P.M., and reopening it back up at midnight, May 15th or early May 16th. The reason for this request is simply because the governor in his Executive Order 61 states that restaurants in the Commonwealth of Virginia are allowed to open for outside dining only in conjunction with takeout and delivery. The closure of Piedmont would allow for the increased capacity of the two restaurants, which would be Burger Bar and Quaker Steak, for the reopening this weekend. As I stated before, the closure would begin on Friday at 4:00 P.M. and end at approximately midnight on Saturday night. All restrictions set forth in the Executive Order 61 must be followed, and both establishments will be provided a copy of the order in order for them to abide by those guidelines that the governor will set. We feel it's important to support our downtown businesses and any business here in the City of Bristol during this pandemic. As I mentioned previously, we did reach out to all restaurants downtown that would have the ability to host outside dining, to see if they would be willing to do so. Burger Bar and Quaker Steak were the only two that requested that we do this for them. I think it would be a good opportunity to allow people to get out, have an opportunity to dine again in somewhat of a normal setting, and enjoy the good weather that we're supposed to have this weekend.
All right, thank you. So, since this wasn't on the agenda, we didn't have an opportunity to have any public comments, I'm going to open it up if there's any public comment. Go ahead.
Gentlemen, my name is Nancy Marnie, I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner, I do pay my tax. I do have one question about this. I'm very interested in supporting the library. Now, am I correct that in closing Good Street, the dining would take place only on Piedmont?
That's correct. Good Street would not be closed, you could still flow through from Good over across Piedmont to Winston Alley, so it would not impede any parking around the library. The Jersey walls would be set up at the corner of Good Street and at the south corner of Good Street and Piedmont, and also there at the south end of Winston. So, right there where Burger Bar begins is where that Jersey wall would go across Piedmont straight over to Quaker Steak.
All right, so then all of the dining would be on Piedmont itself, and if I wanted to go to the library, I could come in the back way on Good Street and go in?
You can come straight down Piedmont and take a right on the Good Street and park.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move that we approve the street closure.
Second.
A motion from the Vice Mayor and second from Mr. Farnham, council discussion.
I know the street closure is set for this Friday in conjunction with the governor's order taking effect, is it anticipated just for this weekend when they open, or what would we do in the future?
Well, I think the initial thought was, let's do it for this grand opening, what we call grand opening weekend, I guess, of the state, and see how the turnout is for this weekend, and see if it's something that Burger Bar and Quaker Steak would want to continue in the future, as long as dining is not available. So, I think it's just to wait and see, so it may be that I'll be coming to you at the called meeting that we're having on the 21st to ask for a street closure again on the 22nd. And a lot of that, too, depends on weather, I mean, if we see there's 90% chance of rain on weekends, we probably won't do it, but otherwise, we may do it throughout the summer.
And my other question, have you discussed with Bristol, Tennessee, since 7th Street, Piedmont's a?
Jay Dietrich reached out to Bristol, Tennessee, and, you know, advised them of what we wanted to do, and we did not hear that that would be an issue.
Okay, well, this is one closure I can support.
And so you reached out to the other, any other restaurant-type situation on the Virginia side down there, like Shanghai and?
We, Shanghai, the way they're situated, they're on State Street, so it would be almost impossible to shut down State Street to add additional seating there. We did reach out to Bristol Hotel, Quaker Steak, Burger Bar, Bristol Hotel, Eats, seems like I'm missing one, but we did reach out to a number of the restaurants, all of them down there, really.
Do you think this would open up the possibility of any other restaurants in town, not downtown, saying, hey, I want a street closure so I can operate outside?
You know, and I considered that when this first came up, but, you know, a lot of restaurants, take Cheddar's, for example, they have their own parking lot. You know, Wendy's has their own parking lot, McDonald's has their own parking lot, so if they wanted to do something, they have the ability to do it, whereas Quaker Steak and Burger Bar don't necessarily have the ability to have a dining seating option unless it's outside.
So, I know one rule, one law that I'm fairly sure is on the books in Virginia, and correct me if I'm wrong with any of the intricacies of it, I can drink a beer inside Quaker Steak or on their property, but I can't crack open a beer and walk down State Street with it.
There would be no alcohol sales, ABC has suspended alcohol sales for, during this time period, for outside events, so there would be no alcohol.
So, nobody's sitting out in the middle of the street, in the middle of the street getting drunk?
Right. We checked with ABC yesterday.
So, there's no sale on premise, either?
No sale.
On their premises, either?
As long as they would be, as far as Quaker Steak goes, you know, they've got that little area fenced off that, where they typically have the bans, they could sell alcohol there, but it just could not be sold once it came across to the sidewalk.
I think this is some outside-the-box thinking to help a couple of businesses in downtown, so whoever's idea it was, good job.
Outside the box, outside the building, out the street.
I've got a question on public safety. When we shut down for, like, parades and stuff, you know, the Tennessee side, they put pretty large vehicles out. So, what kind of barricades are we going to have, because having people dine out, people not used to that's closed off, and we've had an incident down State Street where a guy was at high speed, you know, one night, and you've got all these people sitting out dining, so you don't want anything like that to happen, so what are you going to do to make sure that, you know, that somebody can't run through that area?
It's the typical things that we always do, we've got police officers, we'll have the Jersey walls set up on, at the State Street side and at the Good Street side, that way people can't turn off State into it, they can't continue on down Piedmont.
So, police vehicle will be there, too?
Police vehicle will be there, plus we'll have a flashing light somewhere up Piedmont that says Piedmont's closed at Good.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. So, is this going to cost us any additional city revenue?
It would just cost for the Saturday night when they go back out and pick up the Jersey Wall barriers, the additional, probably take hour, hours' worth of work.
So, the city is going to set these barricades up, and the city's going to take them down two times a day? Put them up once, take them down the same day, put them up again the next day?
No, no, we're putting them up on Friday and not taking them down until Saturday night at midnight.
Okay.
It'll be closed for roughly 24, 32 hours.
And the only business that's come into mind is Boyd's Bicycle Shop right there on 7th. And that's just a straight shot down through Piedmont.
Right.
And, I mean, we don't need to do anything that's going to hinder them, you know, being next door, in Tennessee.
Well, people can always access it through State Street, so if you're coming down Piedmont to go over to 7th and realize it's closed, you can take a right on Good, go over to State, and then you'll have to go up and make a U-turn to come back, and turn left on the State to get to it, or you can take a left on Winston's Alley and go all the way down to Lee Street and come back out on State Street and go to it.
Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, next item is presentation of FY 2020 third quarter finance update.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council, this is the finance update for the third quarter of fiscal year 20, data as of March 31st, 2020. The state is prepared on a cash basis, revenues the city received and expenditures the city paid, this is unaudited data. General fund summary with a budget of 56.8 million, revenues of 40.7 million, 71.65% of budget, expenditures of 39.2 million, 69% of budget, expenditures of $39.2 million, 69% of budget for a fund surplus of right at $1.5 million. Solid Waste Disposal Fund, I'm sorry, Solid Waste Disposal Fund summary with a budget of $7.8 million, revenues were $5.9 million, 75% of budget, expenditures were $5.5 million, 69% of budget for a surplus of $454,000. Capital Projects Fund with a budget of $11 million, revenues of $3.166 million, 28% of budget, expenditures of $1.9 million, 17.33% of budget for a fund surplus for the year of $1.2 million. $500,000 of this is from the general fund. The remaining $700,000 of that surplus was in accounts receivable at June 30th from VDOT. Transit revenues for the year, $416,000, expenditures of $302,000 for a balance of $113,000. And once again, a large piece of that was an AR at June 30th. Here's the general fund revenue summary of the $40 million received by the general fund. $27 million is from local sources, $11.4 million is from state sources, and $2.2 million is from federal sources. A small amount of other financing sources is in there to total up to the $40.7 million. This is what our general fund revenue looks like, what monies the general fund has received at March 31st. The blue, the local revenue, is 66%. It is 65% of the general fund budget. The state is at 28%. It is 29% of the general fund budget. And federal revenue is in the green at 6%, and it is 6% of the budget. Other financing sources, primarily for this fiscal year, reimbursement from CDBG is less than 1% of the budget. The CDBG transfer will be recognized in recovered costs going forward. The general fund revenue report, keep in mind, at March 31st, if all revenues were even, the even benchmark would be 75%. General property taxes is at 66%. One half of the real property taxes due June 5th. Other local taxes were at 79%. Permits and privilege fees at 57.71%. Building permits are down for the year at 64% through March 31st. That's driving that category down. Fines and forfeitures is at 38%. This is due to a negative budget variance in the court fines, and that variance is not expected to recover for the year. Revenue from money and property is at 129%, driven by a budget surplus in interest earnings. Charges for services is at 71.52%. The largest piece of this is Clear Creek, and we expect it to increase throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. Important to note here also that ambulance fees that are in this category had a budget for the fiscal year of $150,000 and are at $230,000 through March 31st. Miscellaneous revenue is at 76%. Recovered costs is at 62%. This is due to the payment from the Commonwealth attorney, federal revenue sharing funds that is no longer allowed per the federal government. So that is what that negative budget variance is driven by. State revenue is at 70%, and federal revenue is at 66%. Both of these are due primarily to social services receipts. They only request funds as they're expended, so that is not concerning that they're behind just a little bit the 75% benchmark there. Once again, other financing sources is at .03%, and that is CDBG monies that were budgeted now that we now recognize as recovered costs. Our financial data graphs, you can see the blue is fiscal year 16, the orange is 17, 18 is the gray, 19 is the yellow, and the current year, fiscal year 20, is the red. Local sales and use tax, down slightly from fiscal year 16, up from 17 and 18, but down slightly from fiscal year 19. Consumer utility taxes hold steady. Cigarette taxes for fiscal year 20 are up across all periods reported. Lodging taxes are up across all periods reported as well. Meals tax are up across all periods as well. Other local taxes, some of the city's other local taxes and how these revenues are received, it's important to note here that this financial report is for the period March 31st. I have gone ahead, because I knew there would be interest, and it included April preliminary receipts. These numbers are not final. We have not closed April, but I thought that council and the public would want to see how we're being affected. Local sales and use tax, keep in mind, in this category, April receipts are for the month of February. To date, April receipts, the unclosed receipts, 2% down from the previous month. Lodging taxes with a budget of $1.3 million, you can see that April receipts here are down, and they are for the month of March. There is a 29% decrease from April receipts to March, from March to April. Meals tax with a budget of $5.4 million, April receipts are for the month of March, and this category as well is down 29% from the previous month. The target revenue report through March 31st, total positive variances of $610,000 through March 31st. Sales and use tax has a positive budget variance of $128,000. Consumer utility tax, a small positive budget variance. Taxes on records and wheels, a small positive budget variance. Cigarette taxes, a positive budget variance of $54,000. Lodging tax, positive budget variance through March 31st of $128,000. Restaurant meal tax, a positive budget variance of $291,000. Electric consumption tax, small positive budget variance. Admission tax, a small positive budget variance. Communications tax continues to trend with a negative budget variance of $17,000. We reduced that budget in fiscal year 20. It will be reduced again in fiscal year 21. Our general fund expenditure summary through March 31st, 2020, and once again, if there was an even benchmark, it would be, we would be at 75%. Government administration is at 59%, judicial administration 61%, public safety 69%, public works 59%, health, welfare, and social services 67%. Education is at 80%, and we've spoken about that several times this year. That is due to the timing of state revenue and federal grant revenue, so the schools need more local revenue at the beginning of the fiscal year. It does even out. Parks Reconcultural, 76%. I'm sorry, 68%. I read the long line, sorry. Parks Reconcu-- I'm going to do it again. Community development, 76%. And this is due to flow-through funding that is offset by revenues and incentive payments that are above estimates that are also offset by revenues. Nondepartmental is at 66%. Debt is at 77% due to the timing of the city's debt payments. Transfers are at 66%. So overall, general fund-wide total expenditures through March 31st are at 69% of budget. This is what our general fund expenditures look like, how the city's money is spent. And in the black box to the right, those are the percent of the budget that each category is. I think it's always good to compare not only where each category is, but against the budget. So public safety is at 28%, and it is 27.91% of the budget. Health, welfare, and social services is at 15%. It's 15.92% of the budget. Education is at 14%. It is 12% of the budget. Public works is at 9%. It is 10.59% of the budget. Debt is at 8%. It is 8% of the budget. Parks Reconcultural is at 5.68%, 5.75% of the budget. Transfers is at 5.6%. It's 5% of the budget. Government administration is at 5%. It is 6% of the budget. Judicial administration is at 3%. It's 3% of the budget. Community development is at 3%. It's 2.71% of the budget. Nondepartmental is at 1.48%. It is 1.53% of the budget. Now, I know I just said a lot of percentages, but the point of this slide is that the actual expenditure composition through March 31st is right in line with where the city budgets its monies. The quarterly update for phases two and three of the fall. The city budgets $826,700 in revenue, little over $2 million in debt payments, and $350,000 in revenue sharing payments for a deficit of $1.5 million. As of March 31st, revenues received were $557,000, 67% of budget with additional tax revenues still coming in for the fiscal year. The debt expenditures have been paid, and one half of the revenue sharing has been paid. At March 31st, the actual deficit is 1.66, but looks to be in line for the budgeted amounts. Transitioning to solid waste, revenues of $5.9 million, expenditures of $5.4 million for a fund surplus of $454,000 at March 31st. Disposal revenues were at 71.79%, collection revenue 77%, nonoperating revenue at 69.47. This is the transfer from the general fund prior debt savings and the cash carryover used for the liner. Disposal expenditures paid were at 60% of budget, total budget and encumbered at 76%. That variance there is the encumbrance for the liner, which was finalized in April. Collection expenditures are at 58.81%, debt expenditures 99%. Keep in mind that 28%, that the debt expenditures are 28% of the solid waste budget. The debt service schedule, and this is presented quarterly to council, and when you all are all up here, I think it's a little easier to see. I apologize for this, but we want to make sure we show this quarterly. This is the citywide general obligation bonded debt. It is the debt that is backed by the full faith and credit of the city of Bristol. This has been updated to reflect the May 15 closing of the 2020 refunding with the savings factored in. You can see over the next several years, the city's GO bond requirements escalate to $7.6 million. You also can see the budget shortfall there from year to year. This also shows how the city plans to use that 2018 refinance savings that we have set aside to offset the debt escalation, as well as the current budget reserve to offset that escalation. Once again, the unexpended debt service reserve funds that council committed in last June, June of 2019, will also be used to offset the escalating payments beginning in fiscal year 22. So what this schedule really shows us is that under the current debt service budget plan, the plan funds the debt service into fiscal year 2024. This is the city's current plan. It's important to keep this in mind as Mr. Eads presents the fiscal year 21 budget tonight. Cash balance information, the tan expired in December 31st, 2018, and has not been renewed. This is certainly in line with city council's plan a few short years ago and has been a success for the city. The operating cash balance at March 31st was $17.6 million. For perspective purposes, one year ago, March 31st, 2019, the balance was $16 million. Two years ago, it was $9.9 million. And three years ago, the cash balance was at $5.9 million. The city's reserve funds, $1.4 million for the emergency reserve, $1.6 million for the general fund debt reserve, of which that .67 million will be used in fiscal year 21 per the schedule we have. We've prepared for that all along. And then $142,546 for solid waste debt, the majority of which will be used in fiscal year 21 as well. And you can see the tan history up there. 1617, it was used in the fall only, $1.7 million. The previous year, $2.4 million. 1415, $6.7, and in 1314, $7.6 million was borrowed on the tan. The graph shows the city's cash balance at month end. The gray line is the current year. The orange line is fiscal year 19, and the blue line is fiscal year 18. You can see the trend here. Keep in mind, this is the balance at month end. It does vary during the month, but you can see the curve and the escalation of the cash through the year. Now, fiscal year 20 projections, May and June are typically financial positive months for the city, primarily due to the real property tax collections that are due on June 5th. The average over the last two years is about $3 million of revenues over expenditures during that two-month period. The current estimate of the revenue shortfall for fiscal year 20 due to the COVID-19 pandemic is $1.7 million. The primary drivers of that are meals, lodging, and sales taxes. We are working from estimates based on data we've seen across the state, but there aren't models of revenue for us to follow at this time. There just aren't for our projections. We're actually having to project the information as we receive it. The city manager did issue a directive for essential purchases only on March 13th, 2020, and vacant positions have been left unfilled to offset what we could see pretty clearly was going to be a revenue shortfall. If actual revenues fall in line with projections, which are changing daily, it does appear that the general fund will continue to have a surplus for this year, of which the general fund budgets for a $1 million surplus anyway in the debt reserve. So once again, I want to qualify that by saying we're updating those projections daily as we receive revenue numbers coming in. I refer to this as nowcasting. I've borrowed that term, nowcasting. I did not invent it, but it clearly accurately describes the process used to update the revenue projections and financial estimates. We are utilizing the information we are receiving currently on a day-to-day basis to forecast financial results in real time. That concludes the presentation of the financial data as of March 31st, 2020. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this before we move forward?
You had a couple of questions. How did you calculate your $1.7 million, the estimated reduction due to the COVID-19?
Well, that's a very good question, Councilman Mumpower, because, really, we want to use good, solid estimates. Unfortunately, we don't have any model. So what I have been participating in, gosh, now, for four or five weeks, is weekly webinars through Zoom with my peers, led facilitated by Virginia Tech, with my peers across the state. Facilitated by Virginia Tech, they've done an amazing job of getting information out there. I have relied on information published by Old Dominion University, put out there by VML as estimates. And what we have begun to do now, to get to the $1.7, was those April numbers that I showed, we were able to use that. And keep in mind, April for sales was for the month of February. April was for March for meals and lodging, and taken a percentage of that. What's so important is that we switch to essential purchases only so that we're really not only, we're really limiting the revenue that's coming in. I don't know that I answered you very well, because I think you're probably, if you were looking for a formula, I will tell you that I haven't been using one. I will tell you that I've been using a standard month of the three primary drivers and taking 20% to 30% of that for May and June. I now know April and see where that gets us. I've been taking a lower percentage of meals and lodging because I believe the impact to that will be more drastic than the sales, but I'm updating that daily. But I'm updating that daily.
So if you took the 29%, that's the only data point you showed up there, right? On your, on your graphs, the reduction from March. So if you, if you just assume 29% and you apply that number to your meals and your lodging and your sales that have occurred month to month, what, what would it back into? Did you, have you done that to see how it compares to your 1.7?
Well, let me, let me tell you how I came up with the 1.7. I took our revenue general ledger and I looked at, these are our volatile revenues. These are the revenues I think will be affected by COVID-19. And it didn't just include sales, meals and lodging. It included every local revenue that we have. Feel like our state and our federal revenue are not going to be impacted at this point by COVID-19. But it included not only meals, lodging and sales, but it included court costs, which obviously were impacted. It included Sugar Hollow fees, which were obviously impacted. So I looked at every revenue. I took a normal month and tried then to allocate the percentage. Some things went to zero, but I tried to allocate a percentage based on what I saw was, was being published throughout the state. Some of the percentages that I have seen used is 50% of meals, 50% of lodging. Mr. Eads has some of those percentages in his presentation. I will tell you, I will tell council, I would love to have a formula. I would love for somebody to be able to tell me a formula. But right now, we are using the data as it's received. I do feel like it was a solid method though, and we didn't just look at five revenue accounts in the city. Every local revenue has been looked at. That's how, that's how I forecasted the 1.7.
I know you mentioned that, that long-term, some models are saying maybe 50% for lodging. When you were showing us the April unfinished numbers, so lodging and meals were both down 29%.
Yes, sir.
Is that fairly on track with other localities or do you know?
I will tell you, I, I'm not sure the answer to that. Tell you what makes Bristol a little different than a lot of localities is our, our other local taxes are a significant piece of our budget. I'm sure they're significant to every locality. But really, when you look at our budgeted local taxes, they're almost equal to our, our real, real property taxes. So what, what we heard early on, and I know Mr. Hartley has seen this in the paper, was that Bristol could have a significant impact. So I have not compared our effect to, to any other locality and changed my percentage allocation.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, we'll move on to presentation of city managers' recommended budget for 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Good afternoon, council. Just to follow up some of the questions that were previously raised in regards to the quarterly budget presentation. One of the most important things, one of the most startling facts is the fact Old Dominion University ranked the city of Bristol the 11th most volatile locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia that in regards to the pandemic and how the pandemic would affect our finances moving forward. So you will see that reflected as we move through this budget here tonight. But before I start, I want to say at this point in time, we should have been well into the budget process and bringing the budget discussions to a close. However, COVID-19 has made an impact not only on Bristol, but to the entire world. The last pandemic the world faced was the Spanish flu in 1918 and it lasted for about two years. At present, no one with proper credentials can advise us as to when this pandemic will end or if it will ever end. Our city, our state, our nation and our world will forever feel the impact of COVID-19. Eventually, we will recover and learn to function in a world where COVID-19 may exist for an extended period of time. What we know are the following. The world's greatest research physicians are working on a cure and a vaccine. Our first responders, doctors and nurses are putting their lives at risk every day to provide the best medical care to those who are sick. And many Americans are doing their part by staying at home, shopping online, ordering takeout and practicing social distancing in order to keep themselves, their family members and coworkers safe. The bigger issues are the unknowns. We do not know when life will return to normal as we used to know it or if it ever will. We do not know when stores will reopen. We do not know when people will feel comfortable being in retail shops and restaurants. We do not know when jobs will return for those who have lost jobs or will lose jobs. In short, we do not know what our world is going to look like in the next six to 18 months. We are in unprecedented times that will require extraordinary efforts to bring normal back. Tonight's budget is not the budget I'd hoped to present to this council or to its citizens. This budget will be a sobering reminder of the financial challenges the city faces. Cuts have been made financially to this budget and also personnel-wise as we move into the fiscal year 21. We will have to continue to monitor revenues and expenses in order to make adjustments as necessary. While everything may seem like doom and gloom, we need to remember the good things we have in this city. We have citizens who care deeply about the direction of the city. We have downtown restaurants who have stayed open to provide meals for people who want a little bit of normal and jobs to their employees. We have small businesses that have remained open during difficult times when it may have been easier to shut their doors and go, go home. We have had people donate masks, food and other items to their neighbors and friends to keep them safe. We have a business community that has developed a relief fund in order to help less fortunate small businesses during these times. We also have businessmen who in spite of the current economic situation are moving forward with a substantial economic development project that will bring a much-needed infusion of jobs and revenue to the city in the future. But most importantly, we have people who care deeply about their family, friends and neighbors during difficult times and are lending a hand to each other to make a positive impact on lives. Once again, Bristolians have risen to the challenges of COVID-19. Now for this year's fiscal budget. Tonight's overview, we will discuss the statutory requirements of a budget. We do this every year. A budget summary of all funds, the general fund summary, a budget comparison and budget reduction summary, capital fund detail, financial policies and the next steps that we'll be taking over the next six weeks. Statutory requirements. Virginia Code 15.2 hyphen 2503 states, "The governing body shall prepare and approve a budget for informative and fiscal planning purposes only." That statement there cannot be any more true than it is today because I can tell you five gentlemen tonight, the budget that you all passed this year will not be the same budget we end with in fiscal year 21. It will change and I anticipate probably having to come back in front of this council late October or November and make adjustments based on revenues and expenses as we see them moving forward. As I continue to read, so, "A budget is for informative and fiscal planning purposes only, containing a complete itemized and classified plan of all contemplated expenditures and all estimated revenues and borrowings for the locality for the ensuing fiscal year." There, I've mentioned this before and Ms. Spradlin's mentioned it tonight as well. There is no guidebook for local government budgeting during a global pandemic. There is also no guidebook for state government during a global pandemic. We are in unprecedented times. We are seeing things that we never thought we would see and we have to deal with those on a daily basis. Contemplated expenditures and estimated revenues are based on the best data we have at the time, but things like COVID-19 are unprecedented. I will say it a thousand times between now and June 30th. There are, there is no formula. We have to make decisions based on the data that we have in front of us and we have to realize that we're going to adjust these decisions as the year moves forward. So we'll start about talking about a summary of all our funds. Total revenues for projected for fiscal year 21 is 68.3 million dollars with total expenses for all funds at 68.3 million dollars. The general fund is 76% of that at 51.8 million dollars. Capital projects at 14%, 9.6 million. The solid waste disposal fund at 8% at 5.8 million dollars. The CDBG block grant fund is at 1% at 368,000 dollars. Transit fund at 1% at 477,000 dollars. Asset forfeiture fund is less than 1% at 101,000 dollars. And the Commonwealth Attorney's Federal Revenue Sharing Fund is less than 1% at 125,000 dollars. General fund summary. Revenue sources, as Ms. Spradlin likes to say, she loves to see the blue part bigger. And at 34 million dollars, that is our local revenue sources for the upcoming fiscal year. The revenue from the Commonwealth is in orange at 14 and a half million dollars and the federal revenue is at 3.2 million dollars. General fund expenditure summary, this is the same type of summary you saw in the financial report. And I think it's important as we move through this process that we see how expenditures are being allocated throughout this process and how it lines up with what we have here tonight. Public safety is 29.63% of our budget. Health, welfare and social services are 16.95%. Education is 12.76%. Public works is 10.79%. Debt is 8.74%. I can't see some, getting older. Government administration is 5.1%. Parks, rec and culture is 5.06%. Transfers are 4.35% of our budget. Judicial administration, 3.62. Non-departmental, 1.6 and community development, 1.4. The purpose of this slide is to show that the largest percentage of our budget goes to public safety, roughly 15.3 million dollars. Public works is at 5.6 million. Health, welfare and social services is at 8.7 million. Education is at 6.6 million. And debt is 4 and a half million dollars out of our general fund. So our largest percentage of taking care of our citizen goes to public safety and public works for a total of little over 20 million dollars. Budget comparison and reduction summary. For fiscal year 20, we also have my fiscal year 21 version one budget, which would have been presented several, a month ago, had COVID-19 hit. So you can see the fiscal year 20 original budget was 53.9 million dollars. My, what would have been my fiscal year 21 recommended budget was 54.6 million dollars. It was an increase of 759,000 dollars from the previous year for an increase of 1.4%. And my final recommended budget to you all tonight is 51.8 million dollars. That's a decrease of a little over 2 million dollars for a percentage decrease of 3.86 million dollars from the fiscal year 20 original budget. My first version that you all did not get to see. I think it's important that you see what we were going to do that we'll not be able to do now. So I developed a recommended budget in early March of 2020 with general fund revenues and expenses of 54.6 million dollars. Balancing this recommendation required significant reductions. Among them, the sheriff's department overtime and IT funding. Reduced inmate housing to 1 million dollars. Transfer to the solid waste disposal fund was reduced to 227,480. We reduced the city attorney increase. We reduced tourism promotion agencies from CVB down to 100,000, Believe in Bristol to 15 and BCM to 3,500. That's the budget that you would have seen. This is not the budget that you will see here in a few moments. So you can already see that we would have had significant reductions from the previous fiscal year based on the budget that I would have recommended. So the final recommended budget. March 13th, that morning about 8 o'clock, I enacted essential purchases only. I was homesick with the flu. People thought I had COVID-19, but it was only the flu. And Tamara and I had a conference call that morning and made a decision to go to essential purchase only at that time. We also addressed hiring, not, not to hire for vacant positions as well. So to address the future fiscal year impacts, we estimated revenue reductions for full or half year and reduced the expenditures accordingly. And this is based on information that we've gathered over the past six weeks talking with colleagues across the state and with people who have the expertise to help local governments through this type of situation. Departments were eventually tasked with identifying reductions with a goal of 15% per department. After we received those reductions back on April the 24th, myself and the CFO, we reviewed those reductions and made further adjustments as needed to meet that target. These reductions will have a significant impact on the types of services and the level of services that we provide to Bristol's residents. And this is important for you all to understand. As we move forward, we're going to have less people. Less people means we cannot provide the same level of service like we have been used to getting for a period of time. Our goal is that COVID-19 goes away and as revenues increase, we come back to you all in October or November and say we can make an adjustment to the budget and bring some of those positions back. Or we may be coming back to you in October or November and saying revenues are not on track and we need to make further reductions, which would mean it's further job loss. So COVID-19 revenue impacts. So for a partial year, for six months, we reduced the lodging tax by 50%, meals tax by 50% and admissions tax by 70%. The full year, we reduced the local sales and use by 10% and the business license by 10% as well. Total impact of 2.593 million dollars. And we even had to revise this as of last Friday when we learned that a local business would be closing its doors that provides admissions tax to the city. We went back and revised this once again at the, probably around noon on Friday, right before we were ready to hit print on the budget books. Changes in expenditures by function. Government administration is down by 301,000 dollars. Courts and judicial services down by 85,000. Public safety down 624,000 dollars. And public works, streets, engineering and fleet is down 293,000 dollars. Social services is cut 212,907. Schools are cut by 186,000. Parks and rec, 316,000 dollars. Community and economic development, 383,000 dollars. And transfers, 193,000 dollars. Now, this is the impact that is very sobering, not only for me, but for many employees that I had discussions with today and it should be sobering to council. Over the course of this fiscal year, we have a total full-time employment impact of 16 positions that will be lost. So in information in IT, you will lose half a position. Purchasing, you will lose two-thirds of a position that's been restructured and combined with some in finance. The judicial alternative sentencing program will lose one full-time employee. The police department will lose three full-time employees. One of those full-time employees is an officer. The fire department will lose one firefighter. Animal control will lose a half, is a part-time employee. Public works will be down half an employee. Social services is down four employees. Parks, rec and programming is down two and a half employees. Economic development is down one employee. Community development is down a half an employee. And code compliance will not, will no longer have one person dedicated to code compliance. The Bristol, Virginia public schools, fiscal year 20, 6.86 million dollars. They requested 6.986 million. My original budget would have been 6.7 million and the recommended budget to you all today is 6.586 million dollars. Tourism promotion program, which includes Discover Bristol, Believe in Bristol, Birthplace of Country Music. Fiscal year 20 budget, Discover Bristol was 125,000 dollars. Believe in Bristol at 20,000. Birthplace of Country Music at 5,000. Discover Bristol requested 175,000 dollars for fiscal year 21. Fiscal year 21 version one, which would have been presented in April, was a recommendation of 100,000 dollars. However, my recommendation tonight to council is a 50,000 dollar line item to CVB or Discover Bristol. Believe in Bristol in fiscal year 20 budget was 20,000. They requested 50. Version one had them at 15,000 dollars. My recommended budget is 7,500 dollars. And Birthplace of Country Music was 5,000 dollars in fiscal year 20. They requested 125,000 dollars. Version one was already going to be reduced to 3,500 dollars and my final recommended, recommendation is 1,750 dollars to the Birthplace of Country Music. Falls, phase two and three, the revenue update. Fiscal year 19 budget was 470,000 dollars for the total for the falls and fiscal year 20 is 826,700. And fiscal year 21, that has been reduced to 743,000 dollars. As you can see, the debt that is allocated to phase two and three of the falls continues to increase by roughly 250,000 dollars every year. So it went from 1.8 million in fiscal year 19 to a little over 2 million in fiscal year 20 to 2.3 million in fiscal year 21. The revenue sharing agreement stays the same. That's the revenue sharing agreement with Washington County of 350,000 dollars. The deficit and revenue shortfall is 1.6 million for fiscal year 19 budget. For the fiscal year 20 budget, 1.56 million and fiscal year 21 is 1.9 million dollars. So the fiscal year reduction of the deficit in fiscal year 20 was 117,000 dollars as compared to 19. And in fiscal year 21, it's 363,000 dollars. Solid waste disposal fund, the collection rate will remain at 33. I'm not asking for an increase this year. However, there, there's, we'll have to pay for this later. There's no other way to say it. The liner accrual. The liner accrual, we are not putting any money aside for liner accrual this year. That's eliminated due to the reduced general fund transfer that I mentioned previously. Closure and post-closure accrual is now $146,510. And the general fund transfer is $106,000. Capital projects fund, transfers from the general fund is $468,000. We anticipate state funds of approximately $2.1 million and federal funds of $7 million for a total capital project fund of $9.6 million. And this will be our, this is the detail of the fleet rotation or for capital projects. Sheriff's office will have a fleet rotation. They'll have two vehicles for a total of $90,000. The police department will receive, I think that's five vehicles for $220,000. An audio recorder for $30,000. That's a total of $250,000 from local funds going to the police department. And then the personal protective equipment for the fire department is $30,000 for the Capital, the Lee Highway, Phase 1B is $5.6 million. Shared use path, over hill to Clover is $192,000. Goodson Street Bridge Rehab, $392,000. Drainage improvements of $45,000. The shared use path on Bottom Road, $786,000. Euclid Bob Morrison Signal, $416,000. The MLK Bridge Rehab, $712,000. The Fairview Street Bridge Rehab, $267,000. Lee Highway Old Airport Intersection, $306,000. And Oak Street Bridge Replacement of $482,000. Out of these projects, $98,000 is local funds, $2.1 million state funds, and federal funds are a little over $7 million. Financial policies and our next steps as we move forward. It's been important that we continue to update council in regards to how we fall in line with our financial policies. And our general obligation debt as a percentage of the assessed value, our policy goal is 5%. You can see we've reduced that every year since fiscal year 17. And this year, the projected general obligation debt as a percentage of the assessed value is 7.95%. Debt as a percentage of operating expenditures per fund, the operating fund, we have a goal of 8%. And in fiscal year 21, that will be an 8.92% that we are projecting as a percentage of the operating expenditures. Solid waste disposal, we set that goal at 8% and it's at 36.52%. And that's just due to the 30-some-odd million dollars in debt associated with the solid waste disposal fund. The unassigned fund balance, our policy goal is 18%. And you can see, we have continued to increase that. We were 27% in fiscal year 19 actual. We're projecting at 23% for fiscal year 20. And for fiscal year 21, we were projecting 27.07%. What's next? May 26th will be a public hearing. Council may make changes to the budget presentation after that public hearing. May 27th and 28th, I have blocked off to meet with each of the council members to discuss the budget in detail and go through it line item by line item. You all have a budget book in front of you all and you have a couple of weeks to review that. Week of June the 1st are potential workshops if needed. June 9th is the first reading of the budget ordinance. And June 23rd would be the second reading and the passage of the budget ordinance. So at this time, I'll open it up for any questions or any comments as to how you all would like to move forward.
Do we have any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, I've got some.
Go ahead.
Okay. I thought it was a surprisingly good presentation.
Shouldn't surprise you.
I actually liked, I was expecting a lot worse, honestly.
Okay.
So I'm glad to see we're recognizing what's going on with revenues and where we might end up. I would like to, I would like to understand a couple of things. One, is the government of Virginia, the state, budgetary changes they made and what they were projecting for the localities for education? Is there any change in any of those numbers when you're showing the reduction of the school system is, is, how is that playing?
There's a lot of moving pieces to that. And if Tamara, if I mess it up, I'll let you explain that education piece. But at the moment, I think the school board was notified that they were going to lose approximately $150,000 from state funding, which does not show in what we're transferring over. But what you're seeing here, let me just go back maybe. When you look at that $6.586 million, the school system has realized some savings due to the fact that they've been closed since mid-March. And what will happen is we'll be asking to take some of their savings to roll over into next fiscal year. And that's part of that reduction that you're seeing there. So it's not necessarily a $100,000 difference that you're seeing because there will be funds that will be available to be rolled over. I'll let Tamara, before I screw that up any further.
The plan this year, when Mr. Eads sent out the request for departments to reduce by 15%, conversations began with the school. And they actually adjusted their request. Dr. Perigin doesn't really have the authority to do that, but in communication with the school board, from the $6.986 down to the $6.586. Also, in fiscal year 20, school boards are not allowed, unfortunately, for their general fund, if they have savings, to roll that over and apply for next year. So their current year fiscal year 20 appropriation, they are not going to spend. They estimate, based on savings for the current year, $250,000 of that, of which the city of Bristol can use to meet that $6.586 million school appropriation. So not only did their requests decrease, but they're returning current year funds to help us meet the $6.586 next year, which is, which was really cooperative, really good communication from the school. So when you're looking at your budget books, the very first line item you'll see is beginning fund balance. $250,000 of that is savings from the school for this year that they're going to use to help us give them the $6.586. By state law, not by, not by city law or Bristol, Virginia school law, they cannot save it and roll it themselves. So we're going to handle it that way.
Well, my question was, I think the governor, I think they were trying to put in some salary increases for teachers. I think that got pulled, pulled back at the last minute, and I didn't know what impact that had long-term on what we're talking about here.
I think that-
And then the capital that was discussed for school, you know, for school issues was, was being talked about. So had, did any of that transpire? Is that playing into this at all?
I would leave the issue with the teacher raises, I think that's a question for Dr. Perigin, as to how they're going to deal with the teacher raise piece.
I'm just wondering if there's any more surprises that we don't know about, right? That the state's pulling back preliminary budget numbers or stuff they thought they were going to do now, all of a sudden they're going to have to pull it back.
You know, I don't think I can sit here and tell you that we're not going to be surprised.
Okay.
Simply because I don't think the state understands exactly where they're going to be as, as their budget moves forward. I think anything's possible in regards to school funding. But to sit here and say that two weeks from now, we won't have a notice from the State Board of Education that something's changing in regards to funding, I'd be afraid to sit here and say that that's not going to happen.
I thought your 1.7 million estimate, the reason I ask, I was, I was over here trying to back into the same numbers while you were showing your presentation, right? Because I've been, you know, doing that over the last few weeks. So when you just take the three big categories, the meals and lodging and the sales, and know that everybody's been shut down for right at 60 days, and it looks like it's going to start undoing itself, you know, middle of this month. So 60 days of pretty much no retail, no restaurant, no lodging is probably a pretty close, it's not even worse than that. And then how fast people recover. So if you just back those percents out, you know, that's 16 to 17% of lost revenues just for two months out of the year. It comes back to around 2 million to 2.2. So, so you're probably, you know, your, your 1.7 probably is more around 2 to 2, you know, 2 to 2.2, I think. But, but when you look at your budget, you've, you've backed off revenues, I think, 2.1 million. So, so you're pretty close. You're not, and that's why I was expecting a worse picture. You're, you're actually projecting, you know, very, very much in line with what the market's showing, which I think's good because we gotta, you know, we gotta accept reality. Because it's, now it's like we've got to do everything we can to try to help these businesses recover as fast as possible. The recovery is what's going to save us. So what we did tonight to help the restaurants, you need to reach out to every business in the city. What can we do to help you recover as fast as possible? Because that's going to help offset, because you don't want this thing to drag on for another three months.
Right.
And it'd be 50% going into the summertime. So it's going to exasperate. So, so I think, I think we're pretty close there. We've just got to try to figure out how to be better. I think the, I think the FTE reductions, I've got lots of questions there. I think if you, could you show a percent to those, like, like what percent reduction those are relative to the total staffing of each department and kind of the logic or reason behind, you know, those?
Sure.
Why, you know?
Here, in regards to IT, what you have between IT and public works, you have a half an employee there. That was an administrative position to help with administrative issues there. That position has now been reallocated. And that's where you see the purchasing and restructure, where it's been combined all into finance. So, I mean, finance has six employees and they will be down several because you've got two vacant positions, I believe, right now. Three, two. You've got two.
The .5 from IT and the .5 from streets and engineering transferred back to finance. And then we did have, we do have a vacancy, a 1.00 vacancy in purchasing. And we did eliminate .67 of that. But yes, and I've got one more retirement that's coming up in June 30th, June 30th.
Because the thing I can't see with these numbers is if there's an opening there that you're just not going to fill.
Right.
So it's not actually a one-person reduction. You're just not going to fill an opening. I can't see that. But if you're actually losing a physical person that's already on staff, you know, which ones of those are actual losses of jobs for people on staff?
We can send that, we have that information. We can email that out to council.
Right. And then what percent reduction do those represent of the total staffing of that department? You know, how much are you pulling social services down as a percent relative to, say, police, fire, community development, right to C? And then if one, if, if one department's like a lot higher percent drawdown, question's going to be, you know, why are we taking that department down harder maybe than another department? What's, you know, what's the logic behind, you know, more reduction here versus some other department? And so that's what I would question there. I think the, the falls, the 350K that we have on the Washington County revenue sharing, the Rural King movement, what, what's the impact of that time-wise into this budget?
Well, they were supposed to open in June, and I still think they've got a scheduled opening date of June, but I'm not sure what type of impact that's going to have on the budget based on the current financial situation.
Do we can find that out? Does anybody at IDA Washington County know? Does anybody have any intel of what we could expect there?
Well, I mean, based on what Rural King's saying, I mean, they're having a June opening date, but as far as-
Okay, so once they, let's say that happens and they open in June.
Right.
How does that affect that 350?
I don't think we'll know until after we start seeing the revenues come in from Rural King. And that's something by law that can't be shared. They can't share the one business with the public. You know, that's going to have to be done on the backend channels. By law, that just cannot be shared.
So if their retail sales covers-
That, right.
That, then the city wouldn't have to dole out-
That's right.
-that amount of money. Now, what dates do we have to pay the 350?
You know, like on the specific days?
Yeah, what, is it a once a year? Is it twice a year? What's the-
Twice.
Pay twice a year and we pay it after our, our real estate taxes.
So in December and June, so you pay in June.
The end of June. No, June the 10th, I believe, is the next one coming up. We'll cut the check.
I don't think it's a good idea to take the accruals out. I think we've got to recognize, we've got landfill liner issues, we've got post-closure. You, you've got to stay the course on the accruals. It's an expense that you just can't, you just can't plow that forward and, and, you know, pay it later. You, you, we just got to take it and accrue for it now, and it is a real expense, and we got to do it. But I will say, on the other hand, we've put, we've put aside some money. Your unassigned fund balance is showing upwards now of 27%. So there's some excess funds in there. And then you've got the 1.4 million in your emergency fund. So we've got to talk about the responsible way to use those funds. So we, moving forward, we minimize the impact of this COVID-19 on the entire city and staffing situation. Because you don't want to cut so hard that you're, you know, not going to recover fast enough, and then you're going to suffer on services going forward. So you want to be really careful there because people have cut too deep. So I'm, I'm not saying I'm against cuts. I mean, I think we've been bloated in some areas, right? But you want to be just thinking about going forward, you know, using some of those monies which are there for that reason, right? To say, what can we do to minimize this impact until we know more? At least until we see more information, right? Till we let June get under our belt. In July, we kind of see how this, this whole business recovery unfolds. It may be worse than we think.
Right.
But maybe it, maybe it recovers like a light switch. Some of these businesses are aggressive, you know, and they might, you know, like Lowe's, they're killing it up there. These, these Home Depot and Lowe'ses are like, their sales is going at the roof, right? No place else to shop, but they are. Maybe the restaurants with some of the stuff that's happened recently, maybe they, same thing happens. The ones that have survived it, you know, come back really fast. That's what we kind of got to see. So I think we got to use some of what we got just to let time show us what plays out here and not get too aggressive on our cutbacks.
I want to go back to one comment that you made earlier in regards to making sure we're reaching out to businesses on the recovery. And what I will say, probably mid-April, Chris Wilcox and I, really Chris, he started reaching out to businesses. And we started doing a conference call with them about twice a week, I think, up until this past week. And trying to see exactly where they were at in regards to reopening. You know, there was talk at one point, the state was going to reopen May 1st, and then it was pushed back. So we were trying to get a handle of how they were going to reopen and when they would reopen. And the overwhelming majority of the businesses that we talked to on these conference calls, they were ready to reopen, but they wanted to do it safely. And they understood the impact if they screwed up and didn't do it safely, what it could mean further down the line. So I think what you will see throughout the business community in the reopening process, and I think Chris is here tonight, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but they want to be safe. And they want to do it right. And they want to make sure that their employees don't get sick and that their patrons don't get sick. So to think that everything is going to open up exponentially quickly, I don't think is going to happen. And that's coming from the businesses. That's not from me. That's what I'm hearing from them. They want to take it slow. Most of these businesses have corporate headquarters that are setting rules in place as to how they should reopen and how many types, how many people they should have into a business at a certain time. So a lot of the rules that are being put in place are maybe not necessarily rules imposed by government, but rules that are being imposed by their corporate headquarters that they have to follow, or else, you know, it may mean their job.
Mr. Eads, can I just follow up on the 1.7 million dollar? Just to be clear, I must not have been clear. That 1.7 million dollar shortfall wasn't just the measurement of what will be lost during the COVID-19 shutdown. It was the overall shortfall of the year that, thank goodness, thank goodness, is offset by some really positive numbers going into it. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Let me ask you a couple real quick questions. So on the revenue sharing agreement that Councilman Power's talking about, so the 350. So say Rural King opens in June, and they clear 350 in their, you know, in their taxes that they get, so we don't pay them anything. So if they, so correct me if I'm wrong, say if they get 150,000, we still give them 200,000. Right?
Right.
Okay. My other thing is, so on the reductions in staffing.
So let me explain Rural King real quick, too. I mean, what you've got to remember, it's a 1% sales tax rebate that they're getting. And so to get to 350,000, they're going to have to have 300, 35 million in sales to get there. And whether or not that will happen in year one, I couldn't tell you. But that's what they would have to get to in order to get there, staff.
So we should see some reduction in the 350 in theory. We're not going to write them a full check for 350.
We, we'll write them a check for 175,000 on June 10th of this year. I can't tell you what we'll write that check for in December. We may write it for 175,000. We may write it for 174,000. We may write it for 175,000, we may write it for 174,000. Um, I, it's just, it's way too early to tell.
So on the staffing reductions, so like for, so what I'd like, if you could send to us, because I know we can't make any changes right now. Um, like say, for instance, police department, three positions cut. So when I go to the budget book, it says, it's got the three positions, and it tells you where they are. And for salaries, it gives you the total salary. Do you have a way to send us the breakdown, like say, the two administrative positions account for X number of the 94,000 that's the salary cut?
Yes.
If you, if you could break that down, that would be, I think, helpful.
And I would caution you all, when it comes to this staffing, I'd sent an email earlier today, um, once we start talking about specific positions, employees are entitled to have certain things discussed in private. Um, we'll be more than happy to share any of this information with you all. That does not necessarily mean we can come down here and talk about some of it in public.
That's fine. I don't think it would be, you know, just to know the actual numbers for the, for the salaries, I think would be helpful.
I have a question. Um, can we save any of these jobs if City Council were to take a pay cut?
If you all decided not to get paid for the entire year, you could potentially save one position.
You save one position, probably.
How are you going to handle for the, on the timeline for this? So when we do like our public hearing, how are you going to handle it? Because traditionally, it seems like there's been a whole lot of people who will show up for the public hearings. So are we going to try and do it in a different setting?
At the moment, we've got it advertised for this setting, and I think there's various reasons as to why I feel like this setting's appropriate. One, uh, we can have a better control over who's coming in. We have the ability to, not that we wouldn't have the ability to move other staff members elsewhere to do temperature checks and things of that nature. Uh, but one, we do have the executive order that says gatherings of 10 or more are not permitted. My intention is, at the public hearing, for people to speak, uh, we would limit the number of people in here. Uh, they can come in and speak, and then they would have to leave in order to do that safely. Uh, I think, I don't think we've sent the advertisement out yet, um, but if, oh, whoops. So I, I think we could potentially change it if we needed to. Okay. Uh, we could potentially change that. We'd probably have a deadline of probably Thursday morning at the latest to get that changed, uh, if we wanted to look at a different location. But what I can tell you from an IT perspective, our recording system is better here, our sound system's better here, uh, we have the ability to put things up on a PowerPoint here. It's, um, just a little bit easier.
And, and we, we moved it back, Mr. Eads. I'm interjecting, I apologize, but we moved it back because the space here was adequate at the time.
Right.
I mean, we've not had an issue since we moved it back here of not having enough space, so.
I think last year, we did the public hearing here, if I'm not mistaken. The only time, I think we did a public hearing in spring of 17 at the high school, and then spring of 18, I believe, as well, maybe. I can't rem, okay. Last year, we did have the public hearing here.
Yeah, I, I mean, my question, one, I guess what, that was one of them about the venue for the public hearing and, and getting public input on this, but, uh, so they could still comment by, even if they couldn't come here via email or from, all the, the things that you sent out the notice that way.
Yes.
And so, uh, I assume tomorrow, the, the budget book, the slides-
Everything will go online tomorrow, that way people can start looking.
So people can look, and, and they'll have a couple of weeks to, uh- So to, to look at that and, and make comments. I know there's a, a lot to look at here, and I'll just say, I appreciate y'all's work on this, trying to make adjustments. Uh, I'll have to look at all this before I really come up with an intelligent question, but, uh, I do appreciate the work. I know it's challenging. I know it'll probably change over the next, as you say, you know, every day it changes a little bit, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, I can tell you that in regards to changes, I, I mean, I had the unfortunate, uh, opportunity today to talk to many employees about their future with the city. And, um, I was on a conference call yesterday with Senator Kane, I think it was yesterday. And one of the things that's going through Congress right now is how can we loosen the funds that were set aside for localities so that, um, those funds could be used for basically anything that we would need? And, you know, employees do have questions about that, you know, is there an opportunity that some of this may come back depending on funding and things of that nature? And I just don't have an answer for them right now, because, uh, one, Congress hasn't acted, and it's, um, I mean, there's so many unknowns at this time, we, we just don't have all the answers. And we're not going to have all the answers come June 30th either.
Yeah. One other question I had was on the inmate housing. I mean, we've got to, we've got to keep that moving forward, you know, there's, there's activity there, so we've got to, this even means we got to put more forward motion on that. So I think I still saw like a million dollars in the, um-
That's right.
Budget for that.
I can't remember what it's, uh, here it is. Um, and you're exactly right. I have had discussions with police in regards to how we are policing during COVID-19, and how do we anticipate, uh, the number of arrests, whether they would increase once we start coming back online and reopen the economy. What I can tell you, uh, without going into too much detail, I anticipate, once things start moving at the courts again, I think courts are on somewhat of a limited basis right now through June the 7th, I think is the latest order I saw that came out, uh, late last week on Friday. Um, once we start seeing courts move again and start processing cases, we're going to see a significant spike in inmates at the jail. Right now, I think we're right at 90 to 100 inmates currently inside the jail, but I think we will very shortly see a spike, based on the court, the court process speeding back up again.
Mr. Eads, can I add one last thing?
Sure.
Hopefully, um, you and, and council have noticed some changes to the appearance of the budget book. Hopefully, it's a little easier to read, looks, uh, looks professional. Just want to thank Cameron Phillips, the senior accountant for the city of Bristol. He spent a lot of time and a lot of months working on that, and hopefully it has all the information in it that, that council wants in there in a very professional, readable manner. I just wanted to get that. Thank you.
Cameron did a great job, um, putting this budget book together for us. There are a few things that are not in the budget book. My typical letter is not in there right now, but we'll get that in there, uh, for the final budget book, uh, in June.
And back to that, um, what can we do to get businesses back up fast? It really comes down to being creative. What can we do to delay some of the meals taxes and things they're hit with during the time they're trying to ramp back up? To give them the opportunity to show discounts and, you know, things that they can do to get their business back up quickly? That's, that's what we got to think about. You know, there might be some things, because our meals tax is really high in the city, you know? So what can we do, if you talk to them, anything like that, to help them get more patrons to come in, right? To get their revenues up faster, uh, at least in the short term, you know, 30, 60, 90 days, that would benefit both sides, them and the city, because we, we'd get the taxes flowing faster if we could offset it by, you know, some reduction in tax temporarily.
Well, I, I think there's a couple of things that come into play with that. One, you know, all restaurants need to pay their taxes on time. I think that helps. Um, two, if we start reducing meals tax, we've got to make up for it somewhere. And, you know, that's going to be a discussion we'll have to make, where are we going to make that up from? And then three, meals taxes should be segregated. So if I go pay $10 for a meal, and I get the seven and a half percent tax, that's 75 cents, that 75 cents should not go into my operating account. That should already be segregated out, so that when the taxes become due at the end of the month, all they have to do is write a check. Um, you know, I do know businesses have reached out. I've sent you all a letter from one local business in regards to relief on certain matters. And that's a discussion that needs to be had at some point, but I can tell you, from a financial standpoint, the city of Bristol is a business, just like every other business, and we have to manage appropriately, and we have to have these financial controls in place in order to make sure, um, we can operate and not be a hindrance on services here in the city.
Yeah, but there is, there is, there is a movement in the market when, when you, when you reduce the tax a little bit. It doesn't mean you're going to lose that tax. You can get more volume of patrons to actually get the revenues higher than what you expected. That's what I'm talking about.
I think-
I'm talking about the way to incentivize the market to get them back, you know, on top faster, not to give away the tax where you lose it, right? That's what I'm talking about.
Well, I don't want to get into an economic theory discussion tonight, but I think in a, in a normal time, I think that, that's a valid discussion, but in a situation where we're limited by government controls, this number of people that can be in businesses, I'm not sure how much of an impact that would have. I'd have to look at that to see if it would, I think it would have some impact, but I don't think the impact is going to be great in the, great enough to offset a potential decrease in that meals tax. Um, you know, if you go over to Tennessee, you're going to be paying a meals tax of close to 9 or 10%. And, you know, we're lower than on the Tennessee side. So when it comes to the meals tax, quite frankly, I don't think too many people pay attention to that meals tax. They're not going to go and say, well, I'm going to drive up to Washington County to McDonald's to get my lunch and save an extra 2 cents on my meals taxes compared to going to McDonald's at exit 5.
Well, I think it's a question for the business owners. I think you're, you're amiss when you think people don't ask. There've been multiple times people going, why is, why has Virginia got a 10% tax on their meals? I, I couldn't tell you how many times they've asked that. This is two, two, three years ago, they started asking that, because it's, it's glaring when you, when you're a businessperson, you've got a client out, and you're putting the tip down, and you see that, you see that tax-
Right.
It's obvious, they go, why, why is it so high?
It is, it is obvious, especially when you see it on a receipt, you know, when you sit there and you see it on a receipt, and, you know, you see $10 for a meal, and you see that tax, then it, it is a glaring. But at the same time, that meals tax, you know, I don't, can't remember what, Washington County specifically does not have a meals tax. I can't remember what the town of Abingdon has. Okay. Okay, so, I mean, you know, lots of localities, they look at the meals tax as it's a, uh, I won't say it's a disposable income, but it's almost one of these things as to, people are going to pay it simply because they want to go out to dinner, but I think this is a different disc, we can have this discussion probably behind closed doors as to how we move forward on that. I don't-
Do we have any other discussion right now? All right, hearing none, thank you. Um, we'll look forward to talking more about this and changes we might want to make in a few weeks.
I guess, just let me follow up. Is everybody okay with May 27th and 28th to have discussions? And I'll send out calendar invites tomorrow as to times to do that.
Maybe, I might have to, um, I may have a conflict. I might have to do it like the day before, like the 26th or something.
Okay.
Um, that's a Thursday and Friday, isn't it? 28, 29th is Thursday, Friday.
27th is a Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, 26 is a, 28, 29 is Thursday, Friday.
Right.
27th's Wednesday.